All right, seeing that all of our members are here, independents, we'll go ahead and call the meeting for orders. Hopefully do the roll call, please. Mr. Aubrey?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Present.
Mrs. Briggerly?
Here.
Mrs. Greer Rex?
Here.
Latangus?
Here.
Mr. Lundey?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Naughton?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
In our fourth packet, we've had minutes from our August 16 meeting as well as our special meeting on August 18. Do I have to vote yet? I move the Board of Education through the meeting minutes from 8:16 to 21, and the special meeting minutes from 8:18 to 21 as presented. Would you like to say something? Is there any discussion of the minute meeting? Yes. Moving. All right, so all those in favor of approving the meetings from 8:16 and 8:18 presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the approval of the agenda for tonight.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda.
A second. We moved to seconded, is there any discussion? Done? Okay, we'll put it to a vote to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is approved, we'll move on to school presentations, Dreads Strong Summer.
So, I'd like the first thing, Abby Holland, Ann Krebs, Katie Heiko, Arv Santo for her work with this, Ann Nakan who worked with the ESY program, Molly Shar who helped get the summer reading going, all of our principals, everybody that made the Dread Strong Summer program work, and Katie, Pam, and Abby work. And Matt Davis worked at high school. So, just want to thank them publicly, we have a quick video on the show. Overall, we had 41 teachers work at least five full weeks this summer, they rotated, we had more than that, they rotated. We had 150 different support staff, we had summer program work. We had 43 student workers. We had, on any given day, upwards of 1,500 to 2,000 people or kids on the campus. We roughly had about 1,300 kids doing camp. We had about 750 kids or so do the K6 portion of the Dread Strong Summer. We had 235 or so doing Dreads, I mean, we had, it was huge numbers, we had kids there. And it was, it was great to see, it's a good use of the dollars from, from Esser. And what I wanted to do is show a short video, so we're gonna mute that, and I'm gonna take over the screen, I'll be back in about two minutes.
You kicked me off a Zoom. So I'll just show it in the.
So, want to thank Abby, Katie, and Ann for making all of that possible, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, you don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, we come to our first public participation. Each speaker is allotted an maximum of five minutes for a total of 30 minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a public comment will be asked to raise their hands, the time may be provided equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce his or her name, and address, and indicate if each he represents any organizations or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during this single meeting, so is anyone going to speak tonight? Okay. Do you do anything?
Yeah.
I would like to speak. Okay. You can come up and announce your name and give five minutes.
My name is Jackie Baldwin. I just left very unhappily the Mill Creek Student Orientation, my student is with me. My student has a medical doctor's excuse to not wear a mask. He has sensory processing, he has a 504, it was come down from an IP which was a huge battle. I was given the letter last year and it was refused, which is illegal. My son has issues, it is not a one size fits all. He has headaches, he breathes fast and he hyperventilates and almost passes out. He has more than one problem, and to have it completely negated and nullified, along with the other abuses. When he was allowed to only come to school two days a week last year when other students were going forward, I wrote into the board and was told it wasn't happening. That's untrue, I know lots of students were. And then I was told, well, that's because they're teacher's students. My son got 70, seven zero assignments behind last year. He's an excellent student, he started hating school, he started slipping further and further behind. He had an hour, an hour and three tech people trying to get on his MWEA test, along with his teacher apologizing profusely. And then it was a timed test. It's been one problem after another, and I am an incredibly kind, forgiving, and patient person. My daughter has gone through stuff that you would probably not want to hear with the school district and with other children in the district, and with coaches and other people. It is not fair and it is not right that every single person is forced into one little thing. If I were sick, I would not come, if my children were sick, they would not come. I believe very wholeheartedly that every single person in here believes they're doing the right thing, but it is not the right thing for every single person, every single time. I have people in my school, or Jamie Bronson just basically accosted me, called the police on me. She said that there are kids in there with cancer. I have family members who have children who cannot go, that have had part of their brain removed and have massive health issues. We don't go around them, or if we do, we're quite a distance. I believe in hand washing, I believe in distancing, I believe in all kinds of things. But for people to tell my child that he's not as important as teachers' kids, or my child that their doctor's note is no good here, that we make all the decisions for every single person, is baloney. And when I walk into a school and they say, "You can't walk around unless you put it up," and I say, "He has a doctor's note." And they said, "Doesn't matter, you haven't gone through protocol." I tried to go through protocol and I was shut down. There's protocol and there are rules and regulations for reasons, so it is not like this. It's not fair and it's not right. I left the school after the computer came back. I was just lied about to the police. I was told to stand there, they wouldn't let me go get his computer, they sent somebody else to go get his computer. She said, "Put your mask on," I said, "We shouldn't have to wear it," she said, "Put it on," and I put it up. It was not good enough, I said, "Well, you know, he has issues, he's supposed to be able to come in and see his stuff before, you didn't let him do it last year." Nope, you have to leave, I said, "Well, you just sent somebody for the computer." "We'll wait right here," so I waited right there. The second they brought the computer back, asked him, we walked out and she called the police anyways. Is that what Dexter is? I've worked in these schools here, I've worked at every single school here, I know lots of people, I know lots of kids. This is dividing this community and it doesn't need to be. It is so hardcore right now, and it's sad because this is such a wonderful community and a wonderful place to raise kids. And people are not having friendships anymore and not doing things because of this or that or a political alliance. It shouldn't be about that, it never should have been, but there are reasons for people to not have to goose step, march in line with every single doctrine that comes down the line. And my child should not be forced to wear a mask all day when it is contraindicated for him and is poo-pooed away for 99.9% of the children who are not sick in this school, or the adults who are not sick. Everybody I hear is vaccinated, I'm happy if that's their choice. Jamie tried to tell me there are kids in that school who are not vaccinated. I know very well there, because mine's one of them. If I'm worried about what happens to him, I get it, everybody's worried about their kid. I wouldn't be sending him, I wouldn't be here tonight, I would be too afraid somewhere else. If somebody wants to wear one all day, and they feel safe and fine, and they feel that they can breathe just fine, I get it. I've had to wear them at times when I'm not happy about it, but it's very different when you have an issue that your doctor says, "This is not good for him." And it's completely negated and ignored, as if it's nothing. My kids have been treated with this district like they are nothing, and I'm sick of it. I was told last year to leave this district if I don't like it. Is that what you're telling people? I know there's been a mass exodus out, but is that the community we want to have? I want to have my friends and my kids having every kind of friend that they can, because that's how you grow and learn. But to be so close-minded that we're not even worried about anything with education anymore. I have teachers who are spelling the word elephant correctly, I have teachers who didn't know what Stonehenge was, my child corrected them. I mean, this is ridiculous. I would love it to be about education and moving forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh yes, I'm smug, I'm sorry. All right, so. Okay, what else? Okay, moving on to administration, administrative and board updates.
So, we are, we have staff in today, we start with opening day tomorrow morning for the formal PD sessions as a complete staff. Do a file prep, the update is in the building on Tuesday. Next meeting, there'll be one procedural thing that I just wanted to give you a heads up on. So, historically, we've had. The board always creates courses. We had several years ago, we had a whole list that we caught up to make sure we knew if whatever course that we ever offered was approved. Went through all the old board minutes. We've had several new approvals since then. We will need to procedurally change, there's codes for courses, et cetera. There's a handful, there's about six high school courses roughly, that for NCAA reasons for the clearinghouse, they needed a name change. They're coded the same, but the name needs to change to match the NCAA requirements. So we'll have a procedural. I am most likely have a concession if we figure where both of the courses need to change to match. Wouldn't run today, wasn't quite ready. It was close.
The board president update, I have nothing. And so we'll move on to the student representative update.
So there's an email sent from high school kind of about the start of the school year. And a few, few, key few things were that on October 13th, there'll be a optional PSAT for ninth graders. And on, and on the same day, there'll be SAT optional again for seniors. And then on Saturday the 16th, there'll be a PSAT for technical eighth graders.
In addition to that, the new principal has, the high school has added some new requirements for children leaving school early, or if they have to leave for a doc school written or anything. And it's now that you have to get a signed slip from the office to give to your teacher, that has to be signed by your teacher to leave. And your parent has 24 hours to excuse you absent if you are missing for being cigarette out at school. That finishes our student rep update.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so we're moving on to the consent items. We have resignations, new hires, and a budget report. All of that was put in the packet. So, if you want to make me press it as a bulk or if you want to break it up. I would vote that the Board of Education approve the consent items in bulk.
Or?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of passing the consent items in bulk, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay. Consent items have been passed in bulk. Moving on to the next item, which is our action items, which is the dual process lawsuit.
So, there is a, by section two against the dual apps and settlement that will be national. This is for Dexter Creative School, this is a settlement, and this is going to be a significant amount of money.
Can you speak up for this a little bit?
Yeah, it's, it's anticipated to be a significant settlement amount for Dexter. The, prior to the pandemic, we had, every school, including us, had vague issues with duel. We'd have kids that would purchase, and in school, they had, they looked like USB chargers or USB flash drives. They hadn't classed and we were constantly chasing them down, putting in protocols, and a ton of administrative time and teacher time. And parents, working with parents to try to head it off because it was so readily available to young kids. So this is a resolution to participate in that suit, in the settlement.
Just so that the lawsuit itself is against a company for advertising for its children, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Of course, very much of the cigarette companies back there, okay.
And that's a back of the settlement.
Yes.
Is there any cost to us to participate on it?
There'd be.
How much burden will it be on us to participate in this government?
It'd be some of my time, hopefully. The cost overall is, if you look at the agreement, it mostly comes out of the settlement. We have historically participated in several suits, there was the Grand London year ago, there was the, there's currently what they call it, the unfunded mandate. There's never been a suit. We are, we've been part of several. Looking at the county districts, everybody's felt where it's going, they're all in. The last couple of weeks, we all decided that it makes sense after hearing the way the settlement looks like it's going.
So it's a contingency practice, not a time base, okay. How long did they anticipate this lasting?
That's great, you never know what the suits. I wouldn't guess if they were here. Is that the court action? Yeah, in general, it takes a while.
And so is this a long way down, does yours find that?
No, I, from what I found, it's, it's a handful of hours of tracking down expenses. From what I, I believe it's worth the time as a district. Duel really was marketing to kids. I move the Board of Education to adopt a dead resolution regarding litigation against school and other baby manufacturers.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Right. And then moving on to discussion items. The MASP delegate is the first thing that we're talking about, discussing. MASP 2021 delegates, Assembly will begin Thursday, November 11th at 6:00 PM at the Anne Way Grand Plaza in Grand Rapids. Delegates are selected by boards and administration processes, they will decide MASP's decisions on wide variety of issues affecting education. Board of Representatives choose a delegate to represent the extracurriculars at Assembly and certify the stuff, delegate by October 8th.
We do both represent that and all of that, we got them passed, and I guess, we know we're done.
If anyone's interested?
Did anybody vote aye for this? Or the other? I think we've always needed a delegate.
Could you speak up? They can't hear anything.
We can't hear anything, no. So I can only imagine people on Zoom can't hear nothing.
It's hard to hear. It's like, mumble, don't.
All right, so I asked about, we asked about permission from the Association of School Boards to have a meeting.
There we go.
We present a delegate, and I asked who has attended the pass. They said I wouldn't mind being. An alternate. An alternate. An ex-couror.
So what I suggest is, we, as this is the discussion item, check your schedules, make sure that that works for you, and then have it as an action item on the next meeting. Anybody else interested? If anyone was interested, I would, I would also get a new set of questions. More than one person can attend, you just have to name a person that'll be the holder. Any further discussion on the MASP delegate? Okay, then moving on to our board workshops. The board needs to schedule two workshops this fall. We've got to know about our calendars.
The kind, first thing we need to talk about is whether we want to hold workshops. What works better, is it feeling better during the week, or does a Saturday morning work better? What are some options? We don't have to take any exact dates, but conceptually, if we tried to do a September workshop and then maybe one in October, what? What would you prefer, during the week? And what, instead of a board meeting on a Monday that everybody planned to meet it already? Do one before a board game, do one on a morning, like a Saturday morning? Is that a good date with a facility? But we can't really talk about what their preferences, that we're sitting in a meeting.
Are these like two to four hours?
Probably, I think first would be two to three, and then the, by law, we have to train all the board members on the superintendent evaluation process, so that's another two to three.
What's the first presentation?
We probably should do a kind of a, we have, we've had significant changes with the board, so have a board norms process. The board one on one together.
We would have a consultant here for MASP.
For the MASP, yes. And if we could talk, first off, what works better, your schedule in September? Does a Saturday morning work better than an evening? If an evening works better, what days of the week are best? If an evening works better, what days of the week are best? And then we get multiple days kind of worked out. And see who we can present.
Saturday morning's our best.
Important to know.
I also work at, yeah, I kill some stuff.
If you pick a Monday night meeting and then do that in the workshop, sort of regular meeting, like people should already have a time block. Doesn't matter if you don't do it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know, other people behind Mondays, I mostly have blocks during these meetings. So either picking a day we already have a meeting, or honestly, we alternate meetings. Both of those meetings are not, alternating Monday is still something I generally have for you. So that would be, if you're eating, than other evenings, or is that every morning Monday?
And if we started, if we did a Monday, we probably moved the time earlier. So then we started at five or six. So then we don't have to have a lot of. Makes for a long day. So we're aiming for Monday that we had. A Monday or a Monday that we already had a meeting scheduled. And I see what day, what Mondays I can get to their facilitators and then kind of get an idea. So you prefer during the week, aim for Monday.
Yeah.
If anything, that helps. That's what I needed to know.
If if we did, we have another meeting when meeting is scheduled. Courage, and then we have some things that we put off, some policy issues, et cetera. I would like to ask you both, I guess.
Okay, yeah, we are going to have a policy committee meeting to kind of catch up on those policies. We were, we did it first reading, but we had some numbers changed. So just so we get a good look at it again and then bring it forward. So we're trying to set up a meeting.
That brings us to our next public participation. Each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes in this second of the first public participation. For a total of 15 minutes, in the most publicized known time. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a public comment will be asked to raise their hands at the time they be dividing equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name and address to indicate if, and indicate if they represent an organization or agency. And the person may speak more than once on the same subject during the same meeting. Okay, so we have two, two people? Okay. So you are limited to three minutes.
Hello, Kevin Creach, thank y'all know me. I'm asking the board if they could do a deep dive into our scheduling process at the high school. I'm on year four. It's been messed up every year. And all that rework our counselors had to do in the background has got to be a nightmare. So what can we do to improve that process? It is not working. And the change of block scheduling, I'm sure has had something to do with it. And I applaud us going to block scheduling, but I think during a pandemic, is it the right time? But it's done, Dan, I understand. But I'm asking the board to do that. And if you could report out on where you're at with that and how we're going to improve the process, hopefully within the next month or. That would be great. I would love to hear your plan to make it better. Because it's it's painful and we felt it every year. And I know a lot of people felt it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, my name is Holly Cabana. I've been a resident of Dexter for 25 years. I have never been to a board of ed meeting. I have never spoken up like this. I wasn't really planning on it. I've served in the community in a variety of ways. I've been a math teacher at Dexter High School. I've taught three different sports from elementary to high school level. I've tutored dozens of students. I say all that just to say that I am very invested in the community and I care very much about our kids. Several things. Number one, if I was a student sitting there experiencing what I just experienced, I was very anxious because I couldn't understand anything that was being said. I have learned through this whole thing that I read lips a lot more than I ever realized I did. I look at facial gesture, you know, I, I, I was struggling to to hear anything that was being said. I'm, I appreciate the the microphones that made a huge difference. Please make sure that the teachers are set up to be successful so that the children can be successful. Because that was very stressful. I had no idea what what was being spoken about. So please make sure that that is addressed. Also, I would just ask that in the future, if there are any resignations where the board gets to choose people who are taking the replacements, I just feel like my voice is, is, is not represented. And I don't feel like there's diversity in thought. I've, I've, I never contacted the superintendent before last year. I've always been invested in my children's education. I have three children who have gone through Dexter schools. One is in college, two are in high school now. I have never contacted the superintendent before last year. And I have, I have on multiple occasions, because I just feel like a lot of us are not being heard and we're not represented. So if there are any resignations, I would appreciate that the people who apply that were considering a little bit more diversity in terms of a lot of things, just maybe not trying to get all people who are necessarily thinking and feeling the same way so that all of the community is represented. I'm very much opposed to the masks. I don't, I didn't want it to be about that, but I, sitting there and and just feeling like I couldn't hear, I couldn't, I couldn't read lips. I had no idea what was going on. I feel very badly for the the students who may be in that position. I also want you to understand that those of us who are opposed to the masks are not bad people. We care very much about our children. We care about the the children who have health concerns coming in and the the parents who have experiences with. I, I've, I've lost people to COVID. I, we all have been going through this whole thing. We've had loss. It's not that the people who are opposed to masks are bad people and don't care about others. And I really don't appreciate feeling judged by so many in the community because it's not. It's not that way. We care very much about our children. And I would just like you guys to open up to that and just kind of try to open yourselves up to other people who have, who think possibly different than you. Maybe even survey the community to get input and maybe open up the circles of communication so that you're hearing the whole community. Thank you.
I'm Jackie, I already spoke. I was just gonna piggyback off a couple of things that they said to to maybe add a little more light. My daughter has had scheduling issues in the past.
Just to remind you, it's become the same.
Right, right, no, I have. But this past year, at the very end of the year, she met with a counselor before school ended and got it all worked out. It was exactly the same. And by doing it, I think at the end of the year, proactively, instead of trying to scramble, I know there's going to be scrambling, but that might be something really implemented and that could be helpful. Because I, I'm not just about complaining and bringing up problems. I, I'm very vested in this community also. I picked it out of every place in Michigan I could pick when I moved back here. And also, my daughter does not prefer to wear masks. She does not like it, but she does. Because it's a little unhappy for her, but it's not as big of a deal as it is for my son and for others. So it's not like I'm a one size fits all myself. I practice what I preach. I left it up to her. She's 16 years old. So I just wanted to add those couple of things. And I've never been to board meetings either, and it is incredibly hard to hear on Zoom meetings and without microphones. So just to be, like, try and be helpful. Thank you.
Honey Creach, I live in Luxor Township. I just wanted to go over some data that's from Washington County Health Department. As of August 26th, these are the percent hospitalized and deaths in age groups. I don't know if you guys look at that or not. You can probably check in there, probably every week. Zero to 17 is 11% of the cases. 1% hospitalized, 0% deaths. This is up until 8/26. 18 to 24, 2.5% hospitalized, 0% deaths. I think it's very important to consider as we are going forward with the mask mandates. I kept track of the data from Washington County Health Department all of August. And there's 367,601 people in 2019, that's our population. So, I mean, three hospitalizations, one death, zero hospitalizations, zero deaths. I'm just reading right down that line. Yes, we have cases, but we're, we should be looking at hospitalizations and deaths. Four, zero, zero hospitalizations, zero deaths. Three, zero, four, two, one, one, two, zero. And so you go down, and I can give you a copy of this. And when you look at the percent of population, it's many times 0.01% of the population. 0.0098% of the population. And we're masking all of our kids six hours a day plus for those kind of numbers. And it just doesn't make sense to me. So I, I wish somebody could under, get me to understand that better because I'm looking at these numbers and I just don't see the justification for masking our kids six hours a day. Thank you.
My name's Holly Baker. I've been a Dexter resident for many, many years, since 1997. I am a supporter of the mask mandate and I'm a teacher. Those children are not wearing masks six hours constantly a day, and we all know that. As teachers, we are getting them outside as much as possible so that they can do their learning in a more free environment without a mask on. But when they are inside, the experts tell us that that is what should be done. And I support Dexter schools in making that decision. Secondly, I would like to say that I think this board did communicate when there were positions available. Maybe I'm in some special spot that I seem to get the emails and see them. I saw the two people that were, I mean, I knew it was open. I actually thought about that I could put my name up. I did run for school board 20 years ago. I was defeated by Ron Dar, who is a longtime resident. I was brand new. That was fine, but I have continued to stay involved. I am happy with the people that were appointed to take the spaces. And if they prove to be powerful on the board, I'm sure they will be elected truthfully during the next election. I think this board does a good job. Certainly, there can be improvement. There is improvement for everyone. There is too much negativity going on. We need to start working together. The mission I have seen to see for this year is kindness and empathy. And I think we all need to show that. Thank you.
Any further speakers? All right, we move on to. I have a stand.
I just have two questions. I'm sorry, I'm Kristy Vanderdaken. Hi, yeah. Two questions and one, I want to talk to what Mrs. Cabana said. I think the way I interpreted what she was saying about the board members that were appointed, I didn't, like, I don't have a problem with who was appointed. I think it was, and I had asked this question of Dr. Timas and I think Mara. Why is the community not involved in picking people who are being appointed? It was explained to me. It made a little bit more sense, but it doesn't seem like it. I mean, obviously, the elections help to make the board more representative of the community. But the appointment part is kind of sketchy or weird, and I don't know if that's, you can answer me right now anyway. That leads me to my other question is, I'm new to this. I come to all the meetings, but I don't do a lot of the community, I don't do any of the community participation. You guys usually ask, do you want us to answer you in email or, I don't know what the other. Is there ever a situation where you'll just answer us standing right here? We have a why. Oh, you're not going to answer that. So, so if somebody asks you a point blank question, how are we going to hear back from you? And they're not going to answer that.
Email.
Okay. Well, we don't always get a response. That's a, I get a lot of responses, but I do know there are a lot of people that don't. So that was my other question. But I'm not getting the answer. Okay. Thanks.
I probably can't say that there was nothing personal, right? I was just, because I know people who were, who did apply. It was not personal to anyone who was chosen whatsoever. I just, I know people who who did put their thank you, thank you, just.
All right. All right. Any other comments? All right, moving on to board comments. Mr. Williams.
Football team, yeah, I'll, and I think a number of other teams have also. And just watch the team as long as I am. It's just a wonderful, heard around and, oh, great.
Yes, I agree. The Dexter football team had a great start. Any last, any other board members?
You can all say that, don't forget, football volleyball team, ninth grade, won their tournament last week. At Skyline, field hockey team won their tournament in Celine. Well, I think there's other stuff on the title and everything. Both of the women's teams won their tournaments, opening season, so that's cool. Want to comment? JV volleyball also won their tournament this, last week, didn't they? Yeah, so a lot of good things going on in sports. Well, I think the board, this is something to consider next meeting. Based on my question, the green, the green sheets. Maybe add that to the comments so people understand that if they want to follow response. I learned this 18 months ago, fill out a green sheet if I want a follow response versus a commentary. So I would think that we put that out every meeting, just so people understand, while you can, go understand what else is.
I know Dred Strong was featured. My kids were at hand Dexter and they had a great time. Yeah, I know the same, you know, but it was, yeah. So it was a really great program. My kids really loved it this year. They really did a good job with the field trips as limited as they were, being able to do that. And I also want to thank the staff and administration for being so efficient and putting out the letters, the welcome to schools with the teachers and all this. It was so efficient. It was wonderful. So I know it was a lot of hard work and they do it every year, but I really appreciate it.
Do you have a board comment?
Am I allowed to give a comment? Just I don't know if I'm allowed to. But yeah, I was in the building just for the freshman orientation, just for club activity. And it seemed to go off without a hitch. I stopped by, talked to some of the freshmen, and it seemed to have gone away. I know it was talked on last year, every minute, but not that it's after the fact, it did go as well as planned to.
I will just add that the team is appreciating the new test scores. All right. In the packet, there are information items, including the board bulletin, which gives some brief topics. It's a little bit more of what happened in the last meetings than the minutes. And if there are no, no other discussion, let's move on to M, which is your amendment. Thank you.
Since this is over, I do have one last question because I'm not super familiar with procedures and protocols. I had emailed stuff to Mr. Timas last year and I'd heard in one of the last meetings that they were interested in, you know, my son's note. What do I?